I think I would note to unmute after a year and a half. Good evening and welcome to an online meeting of the Burbank Planning Board on Monday, June 14th, 2021. Before we begin our meeting, there will be one general period of public comment tonight during oral communications. Persons speaking during the general public comment period may provide the Planning Board oral communications on any matter concerning city business. If you would like to participate in the public comment period, please call 818-238-3335, and we will announce when the phone lines are open. So for the invocation, I know that the past year and a half has been filled with many challenges in our lives, as well as changes, which can be very frightening for some and exhilarating for others. So not everyone will see change the same way, though, so let's be patient and kind, not only with yourselves, but with others as well, in all of our interactions. So for the flag salute, board member Rosati will now lead us. If everyone could please rise and join us with a flag of allegiance.
Please join me in saluting our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We choose freedom, we worship change, we worship one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Thank you. And may we have the roll call, please?
Board member Gambella.
Present.
Board member Rosati.
I am here.
Board member Otakunian. Chair Liu.
I'm present.
Let the record show, board member Otakunian is absent.
Thank you. In order to balance the health risks associated with COVID-19 and city facilities are closed to the public until further notice, and the public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting. City is providing alternatives to in-person attendance for viewing and participating in the Planning Board meeting. In lieu of in-person attendance, members of the public may participate in the public comment period by calling 818-238-3335. Are there any announcements from city staff?
There are no announcements.
Thank you. There is one public hearing on tonight's agenda. The item is project number two, sorry, 21-0001110, concerning a request for approval of development review and a conditional use permit to construct a media studio spherical geo- geodesic dome structure approximately 186 feet in diameter and 90 feet in height with 28,664 square feet of floor area on a vacant site in the M-2 general industrial zone at 3401 Empire Avenue. Before we begin, do any Planning Board members have any legal or other conflict of interest relating to this hearing?
No.
No.
I do not. Have any Planning Board members had any communications, including written or with the applicant or the applicant's representative, or any other person?
No.
Only at the time of the walkthrough.
That's correct. Board member Rosati and I did do a walkthrough. Mr. Ramirez, have notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
And are there any written communications on this matter?
As of the meeting, we have not received any written communications.
Okay. Well, the representative of the Community Development Department, please introduce herself and summarize the matter for us.
Good evening, Chair Liu, members of the board. My name is Greg Mirzalvakin, associate planner and project planner. The project before you tonight is a development review and conditional use permit request to construct a spherical geodesic dome approximately 186 feet in diameter and 95 feet in height with approximately 28,664 gross square feet of floor area on a vacant site at 3401 Empire Avenue in the M-2 general industrial zone. The project is a media studios facility that will be a prototype for Madison Square Garden Entertainment's creative teams to develop and edit content prior to its ultimate use in their Las Vegas productions. The project also includes improvements to adjacent public rights away and new onsite parking and landscaping. Next slide, please. Pursuant to Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1-502, the proposed media service use consisting of editing film or sound, no seating area, and sound mixing film/TV, no seating area, is a permitted use in the M-2 zone. Per Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1-812A Part III, a CUP is required for structures over 35 feet in height within the M-2 general industrial zone. Structures may exceed 70 feet with the approval of a CUP if located at a distance greater than 500 feet from a residentially zoned lot or comparable PD zone and are located within the boundaries of an adopted redevelopment plan. The project site is located within the merged redevelopment project area that includes the Golden State Project area, City Center Project area, and the South San Fernando Project area. Per Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1-1914, the approval of a development review application is required prior to the issuance of any building, grading, or demolition permit for any project in any zone unless the project is specifically exempted by one of eight exemptions in said section. None of the listed exemptions in 10-1-1914 apply to the project, therefore, the project is not exempt from development review. Pursuant to Section 10-1-1909.2 Part C of the Burbank Municipal Code, in the event a development review application is being processed in conjunction with another application that requires a decision by the Planning Board or City Council, the development review application must be processed for consideration for approval by the Board or Council. As such, the DR and CUP requests for this project are being considered concurrently by the Planning Board. Next slide, please. The project site is an 85,285 square foot or approximately 1.95 acre undeveloped property located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Empire Avenue and North Hollywood Way. North Avon Street borders the side to the north and to the east. The project is surrounded by a mix of commercial, industrial, and service commercial and hospitality uses, including media studios north campus to the east, the Los Angeles Marriott Burbank Airport Hotel and Convention Center to the north, a railroad right-of-way Logix Federal Credit Union Building, and the vacant Fry's Electronics Store to the south, and the Hollywood Burbank Airport and the Regional Intermodal Transportation Center to the west. Next slide, please. Chain link fencing with screening currently surrounds the perimeter of the site. A mix of trees, bushes, and shrubs are located along the eastern and northern property boundaries facing North Avon Street. Existing curb cuts and driveway aprons are located on the southern and eastern sides of the property from Empire Avenue and North Avon Street prospectively. This can be seen in the eastern and southern views on the slides before you. Next slide, please. According to the Burbank 2035 General Plan, the project site is designated regional commercial. The regional commercial land use designation provides for regional employment and shopping destinations that play an important role in the city's economy by serving both Burbank residents and the residents of surrounding cities. These regional centers provide a variety of employment opportunities and services that address regional needs for retail, service, dining, entertainment, and conventions. The centers also play a key role in supporting the media industry and other sectors of the local economy. As can be seen on the map before you, the project site is surrounded by regional commercial and Golden State commercial industrial land uses. The project is consistent with the regional commercial land use designation and would result in an FAR or floor area ratio of 0.37, which would be less than the maximum FAR allowed within the regional commercial land use designation, and that maximum is 1.25. Next slide, please. The project is a permitted use in the M-2 general industrial zone. The M-2 zone allows for a variety of media services, including editing of film and sound and sound mixing for film and TV with no seating area. There are no residentially zoned properties within the 1,000-foot radius of the project site, as the site is mostly surrounded by commercial, industrial, and planned development zoned parcels. Next slide, please. The project complies with all applicable development standards, which include density and intensity, maximum height, required yards and landscaping, onsite parking, loading, general commercial and industrial design standards, and art and public places requirements. The project proposes to locate the dome structure approximately in the center of the site, with ingress and egress to the site occurring from North Avon Street to the north and east of the project. All of the proposed parking is at the surface level. The project meets the city's requirements for minimum stall dimensions, screening, circulation, and backup clearance, and parking lot design standards. The project meets the city required number of parking spaces, which is 54 spaces. The maximum floor area ratio is 1.25, and the proposed floor area ratio is 0.37. The project complies with the required side and front yard setbacks by providing an average setback of more than the required, which is 19 feet. The proposed maximum height to 95 feet is allowed pursuant to the Board's review and approval of the CUP request. Next slide, please. The project proposes a number of off-site improvements around the perimeter of the project site. The existing driveway on Empire Avenue will be removed, and the sidewalk curb and gutter would be modified to accommodate city required turnout for pickup and drop-off. Additionally, the sidewalk parkway areas fronting the northern and eastern property lines along North Avon Street will be reconstructed to a width of 15 feet. The existing sidewalk west of the project site, which is currently fenced off, will be extended north and south to connect to the existing sidewalk on North Avon Street and Empire Avenue, connecting and creating a new pedestrian connection. Removable ballers will be installed adjacent to this new connection to enhance the safety of pedestrians. Any existing street trees, landscaping, lights, and any other infrastructure within the sidewalk area will be relocated and/or reconstructed as necessary. Pedestrian ramps at the North Avon Street Empire Avenue intersection would be reconstructed to meet ADA requirements. The marked crosswalks at this intersection will also be upgraded to a continental crosswalk with advanced stop bars per City of Burbank standards. A staff pedestrian gate would be located along the North Avon Street on the east side of the property, allowing employees working and parking at the media studios north campus to access the facility. Because the project would introduce new daily walking trips between the two sites, a new mid-block crossing with striped continental crosswalk with advanced yield bars, pedestrian-activated rapid flashing beacons, and safety lighting will be provided on North Avon Street between the project site and the existing media studios north campus. Next slide, please. The project is consistent with the city's requirements for minimum landscaping and tree shade. As proposed, the project will exceed the minimum number of required tree plantings, which shall be between 36 and 48-inch box size. The project provides the minimum four-foot landscaping strip required for surface parking areas adjacent to public roadways. The code requires that at least 50% of new parking lots be shaded within 15 years after their establishment to mitigate the heat island effect. The project proposes 86% shade cover within this timeframe, and 100% of the landscape area is drought tolerant. Next slide, please. The exterior dome would be installed on a base concrete slab and have a maximum height above grade of approximately 95 feet. The exterior dome would have an interior structure frame or cube, and exterior dome structure providing for blackout during the day and preventing light spill over during the evening. The exterior dome would provide weather protection for the smaller second dome on the interior, which will display Madison Square Garden's content for post-production editing and sound mixing. The interior dome would be approximately 68 feet 6 inches in height with a diameter of 115 feet. The exterior dome would also include restrooms, a break room, a pantry, meeting room, production space, and a modular server room, as well as a loading dock and a small lobby. The prototype would not be used for any live studio audiences. Approximately 10 employees would be working regularly within the facility, with an additional 20 employees working at the Madison Square Garden offices located within the existing media studios north campus across North Avon Street from the project site. Next slide, please. Staff has analyzed the CUP request and has determined that the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding residential and commercial and industrial uses in the area. Permit conditions have been placed upon the project to satisfy required findings and standard city conditions to mitigate construction impacts of the project and protect the public health, safety, welfare, convenience of the community. The project has been designed to comply with the M-2 development standards, and conditions 1 through 205 have been incorporated into the project to ensure neighborhood compatibility and protection of the public health, safety, and welfare. The proposed project is consistent with the Burbank 2035 General Plan and the Burbank Municipal Code, including the city zoning regulations. Therefore, it is city staff's assessment that the required findings for approval of conditional use permit and development review can be made. Next slide, please. The project qualifies for a categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, in accordance with Section 15332 Infill Development Projects because the project meets the following criteria: The project is consistent with the applicable Burbank 2035 General Plan designation and all applicable general plan policies, as well as with applicable zoning designation and regulations. B, the project occurs within city limits on a project site of no more than five acres, substantially surrounded by urban uses. The project has no value as a habitat for endangered, rare, or threatened species. Approval of the project would not result in any significant effects related to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality, and the project site can adequately be served by all required utilities and public services. The city's environmental assessment was attached to the staff report for this project as Exhibit H. Next slide, please. Therefore, staff recommends that the Board adopt a resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Burbank approving a request for development review and conditional use permit to construct a media studio spherical geodesic dome structure approximately 186 feet in diameter and 95 feet in height with 28,664 square feet of floor area, project number 21-0001110, on a vacant site at 3401 Empire Avenue, based on the findings of fact and subject to the recommended conditions of approval. Next slide, please. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to invite the applicant or the representative to address the Planning Board. You'll have a maximum time of 15 minutes to make your presentation.
Hi, good evening, Chair Liu, members of the Plan Board. My name is Jeff Worth. Joining me is Janne Belkey from our firm as well. And we want to thank you for your time tonight. We are very excited about this project, about supporting Madison Square Garden. A little history, as hopefully you guys have all seen, they're building a $1 billion venue in Las Vegas, and as part of that project, they needed to find a home to create the content to support that venue. So they looked in Northern California, they even looked in West Los Angeles, and they came and decided they had to be in the City of Burbank. And they currently are housed at the Burbank Studios on the former Johnny Carson stage, which is where they're creating the content, but unfortunately with the sale of that property to Warner Brothers, in the next two years, they'll have to relocate. So this new facility is a very long-term commitment to the City of Burbank to support their project, and yet another company is choosing Burbank to be a home for entertainment and creation of content. So we're very excited to support this and be part of it. I know that the project architect, Rick, is going to be presenting some information, but Jan and I are here and available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Worth. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the Planning Board for a maximum time of three minutes. If you would like to make public comment, please call 818-238-3335. Please bear with us, because it may take a few minutes for their first callers to get through the line.
Chair Liu, we're waiting to see if we got any calls in, so give it another minute.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Chair Liu, while we're waiting, our architect did prepare a brief presentation. Would you like us to do that now, or would you like us to wait till after the public comment period?
Oh. Mr. Ramirez, what do you recommend?
We were meant to tag on to Jeff's presentation first, and then we were going to have Rick do a brief.
Oh, my apologies. I didn't mean to cut anybody off.
That's okay.
Just a public comment.
I think we have people in the queue. Chair, I think we have people in the queue, so if you want, I mean, we can, if we have people, why don't we take the comments, and then we can always circle back, because there's an opportunity for them to provide feedback on the backend of this process.
Sounds good. Why don't we do that? Thank you.
And Chairman Liu, I'm glad to sort of intersperse some of the information that I was just going to add in the presentation while I answer the questions, so that's fine, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Tamala Takahashi, you are now on live with the Planning Board.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Tamala Takahashi, and I'm a resident of Burbank. I attended the public meeting about this project, and it is a great use of this space, and I'm excited to see the long-term benefit of the community of the use of the site. After the presentation today, and after hearing some questions from the community, I have a few items I'd like to bring up for the Board for consideration. The first one is that in the presentation tonight, that it was mentioned that there, I believe, if I recall correctly, there's only 15 staff that are on premises during the day, and so I'm wondering why there needs to be 45 parking spots. And a follow-up to that is that I'm wondering if those 45 parking spots are not necessarily needed, if there would be a possibility to put more green space in that area, so that the view from the street is very green and would contrast nicely with the kind of industrial and technological view of the large dome. And then the other concern that came up in the community on social media, and I think it's something that would be itching for the community to know, is this particular development is really close to the airport, and it's also quite tall, so I'm wondering if that will have any impact at all on airports and flight paths and that kind of thing. So if that could be, that'd be great. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay. Thank you very much, Tamala, and it's great to hear your voice again. We really appreciate you making time to attend both the community meeting and the Planning Commission meeting.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're waiting for all the calls to go through, and then you'll get the chance.
Yeah, and then we'll do it.
I apologize.
At this moment, there are no other calls.
Then why don't you go ahead then?
All right, great. Sorry about that. Yeah, we really, really appreciate your time and your attention to this project, Tamala, and your points are very well taken. There is a little bit of confusion about off-site and onsite people. The Madison Square Garden Group has indicated to us that there will be approximately 50 people onsite at any given time, so they may be either working there in the production, the media space production room, in the actual scale model dome inside, or sort of working in buildings nearby, so kind of coming and going. And they do expect from time to time four to 10 VIP visitors to the site, so that's really why we need the staff parking, as well as a few spaces for guest parking, and obviously to cover the ADA parking as well. So, however, I did want to stress that we did not overpark, we did provide the minimum amount of parking, and that we did actually provide an excess of tree shade canopy, both to break down the scale of the building, as well as to, like you said, create a nice buffer around the project and to reduce the heat island effect from the added parking lot. Addressing your second question about the FAA requirements and the possible effect on flight paths, we did get official validation from the FAA that this building is not a flight path hazard, so we did verify that with them. And just to give a little bit of context, the surrounding buildings are all taller than this facility. There's a five-story office building to the, well, they're taller or very close, I should say. There's a five-story office building directly to the east that's approximately 75 feet tall, and there is the Marriott Hotel to the north on Avon, which is 188 feet tall. So I think that's most of the reason that we don't have any flight path issues there. And in fact, we don't even need to have the blinking red light at the top, which might be annoying to the local, to the surrounding offices. And just to give a little bit more context on the project, just for the commissioners as well as to any callers that might be listening from the neighborhood, I did want to stress, first off, I really want to commend on behalf of the developer and the owner, Madison Square Garden Group, Madison Square Garden Entertainment, I should say. The city staff, Greg and Ron, everybody at the Planning and Building Department have been absolutely joys to work with, incredibly cooperative and helpful to us. This is a very fast-track project. The actual Sphere project in Las Vegas is approximately 60% complete construction already, so this media services facility, which is developing the content for the main project in Las Vegas, we're under a very tight schedule, so working with us and being so cooperative has been absolutely critical, helping us to get the grading, as well as the planning approval done in coordination, so I want to thank you again. And I wanted to point out that we're not seeking any variances with the project. The owner and Jeff and his team have been really fantastic and paying close attention to the overall design of the project to make sure it does not detract from that area, that it'll actually be a positive influence, both aesthetically and as well as that it won't impact any of the traffic. There are only going to be probably two deliveries per week, those will be done, and so there won't be traffic. um, you know, and so there, there won't be traffic, a large amount of truck traffic coming and going from this facility and there won't be any, um, off-site or, uh, or overflow parking as a result of the, the employees. So, um, I feel really, really confident that this project is going to be a benefit to the city of Burbank and again, I really want to thank everybody for, for being so fantastic and helpful for us.
And Chair Lou, if I, if I could jump in and just add a couple of points.
Chair, I didn't know, was there a presentation, there's slides that you wanted to present? Okay.
No, that was it. I just wanted to point out those few points.
Okay, thank you. Uh, go ahead.
Um, just to, uh, address, um, Tamala's question over the phone as well, um, the amount of parking is the minimum amount required for the adjusted gross floor area of the, of the structure, which is approximately 27,000, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but, um, which, uh, requires a minimum of 54 spaces, which the applicant has provided onsite, standard spaces with the required dimensions and backup. Um, to the question of the airport, um, we did receive, uh, a letter from, uh, the FAA, a determination of no hazard for air navigation, so I can confirm Rick's statement. Um, as far as the, um, landscaping onsite, the project exceeds the minimum amount of landscaping. Uh, they are providing approximately twice the amount of trees that they need to be providing in the, in the setback areas and the tree shade, uh, is 86% with, uh, within 15 years, which is, uh, greater than the 50% requirement. And as far as the, uh, number of employees, uh, it was my understanding and our staff's understanding that the 10 employees that would be, uh, permanently, uh, stationed at, at the dome would be, um, that's not the, the only people that would be working there. There would be about 20 people who are also at the, um, offices across the street that Media Studios North, that would be going back and forth, hence the enhanced pedestrian crossing, uh, on, at North Avon Street. And, uh, if, if the applicant's team has anything to add, um, I encourage them to do so.
No, I think you covered it. The, the benefit here is that the office space is directly across the street, so there won't be car traffic going between the facilities, folks will just be walking back and forth between the two.
Okay. Any other comments from staff or applicant?
Chair, we're done.
We're just, any questions?
Okay. So, um, I'd like to open up to the board to, if you have any questions for staff or the applicant. Oh. Board member Gamboa?
I have a question for staff. Just a technical question, how is the floor area calculated for a structure like this?
Board member Gamboa, I, I believe the adjusted gross floor area, uh, excludes the mechanical areas and some of the stairwells and access areas that are not usable, but I, that's really a, a building division question, I, I would struggle to give you a perfect explanation, but, uh, just a gross floor area is, uh, a lower number, 99% of the time than the gross floor area. In this case, it's lower by approximately 1,000 square feet.
Oh, sure, and I, and I typically, I understand that for typical, like, office buildings or multi-floor buildings, but this is essentially just a giant, you know, 95-foot height, you know, big dome, right? There's no multiple floors inside, so is it just the floor area of the floor inside and nothing accounting for height? Um, you know, because sometimes when you have like a single-family home and it's like over 15 feet in, you, you double that floor area because it's like having almost like two floors massing kind of issue. So in this case, it sounds like it's just the, the actual floor area of this, the round circular footprint, basically.
If I may defer this question, we, um, we have, uh, Ron Takiguchi on, uh, on the call, who may be able to answer that in more detail.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Lou, uh, planning board members, uh, Ron Takiguchi, uh, Community Development Department. And, um, that is correct, um, Chair, I mean, uh, Board Member Gamboa, it is a, uh, single story, uh, structure despite its height, so, uh, the unique shape, um, has no variant, really, it's the calculation of the floor area of the circular dome and, um, calculated in standard manner after that with the, the, uh, floor area, uh, to calculate the FAR.
All right, great, thanks. Um, one other question, I don't know if anyone from MSG is here or any of the representatives know, but is this solely for the Las Vegas project or they're doing anything for like a forum or actual Madison Square Garden or is it just solely, um, this new, uh, dome-like experience?
I will defer that to the applicant team if.
Yeah, I, I, um, I, I'm very hesitant to, to kind of, uh, talk about their future plans, however, uh, our understanding is that, is that this is primarily just for the Las Vegas facility.
Yeah, that's fair. Um, yeah, I think that's it.
And if I could add one, one other thing about the, uh, net, net floor area, this is an insulated dome, so the walls are approximately, uh, 10 inches thick, so that net floor area, most of the delta is between the, the, the thickness of the exterior of the wall, if that makes sense.
Board member Azadi, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just have a quick question that is for staff, just relates to the property between Hollywood Way and the subject property site. What, what are we going to do with that? Um, strip of property and what can we do with it?
Board member Azadi, uh, the immediate area to the west of the, of the project site, the, the existing sidewalk that's there, uh, my understanding is that, uh, majority of that sidewalk is intact and is, is in, in pretty good shape. Um, the project would, the, the applicant's part of the offsite improvements include connecting that sidewalk to the existing and reconstructed sidewalks to the north and, uh, and south on, uh, Empire and Avon Street. When it comes to the area beyond that, immedi- immediately to the west of the sidewalk area, we have, uh, Public Works, the staff here that, um, would be able to, to assist us with that question.
And Chair, just for the sake of the group, we have, um, our, uh, city, city engineer, Dan Rin, he's also the Assistant Director for Public Works and, uh, one of the other civil engineering staff, Ricardo Sanchez is also here.
Evening, Board Member Azadi, thank you for the question. Um, we have discussed that internally, um, that we'll call it a front-end road, I guess, parallel to Hollywood Way. Um, we really do not have a reuse plan for it, uh, currently. Um, we are in discussions with our Parks and Rec Department for maybe, um, staging some, uh, some of their surplus trees and things of that nature, uh, at the moment, but, uh, currently we do not have a, a permanent, um, reuse for that project, that, that project site, uh, that front-end road at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
I do not have any.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Somebody else had, somebody say? Okay. I do not have any further questions, my questions are answered during the, the walkthrough and with the report. Um, so with that, if nobody else has any questions, I will, um, declare the hearing closed and the planning board will now deliberate. What is the planning board's pleasure?
Chair Lou, sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to add just a procedural point, I just wanted to inform the board, uh, or remind the board that, um, you know, we, we have enough members here, obviously, for a quorum to conduct the business, but to approve this project tonight, we would need a vote of, of all three members.
Right, thank you. Does anybody want to start? Yes, Board Member Gamboa?
Um, yeah, I think this is a, a great project, I think it's exactly what Burbank, uh, should have in a space like this, like it's, it's a, such an awkward kind of located parcel in, by the airport and road, so, uh, uh, very low impact in terms of traffic and, and, you know, people accessing it, it's just a big, kind of a cool structure, I think, especially, uh, thinking about folks visiting via the airport, you know, or coming down Hollywood Way, I think it's going to be a, a neat landmark and ties into the city's legacy of entertainment. Um, and, uh, yeah, it's just kind of, kind of the right, the right thing, right place, right time, so I'm really excited to see this project.
Thank you, Board Member Gamboa. Board Member Azadi?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, I can certainly make the findings to support the project. Um, you know, it's, it's what we do here in Burbank, the media capital of the world, so it, it kind of fits, fits exactly what we do. Um, as Mr. Gamboa said, the, the impacts are very low, um, 15 to 50 employees on the site, most of them work to the adjacent office building. Um, uh, this lot has been vacant forever, so it gets rid of, uh, an eyesore and finally gets developed. And I think there's some, some benefits to the city, um, the public improvements, the widening of the sidewalks and obviously the twice the amount of trees and vegetation. So I do think that staff is going to have to do a good job of marketing what's going on in the site because your phone's going to be ringing off the hook of what the dome is. So, uh, I think, um, but I can certainly make the findings and I, I really appreciate staff, uh, going to the effort of setting up the, to walk the job site on, on this project of this size, it really does help me anyways, um, looking at the scope, I didn't realize how big that site was, um, so I, I think it was very important, so thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you, Board Member Azadi. Um, I want to echo my fellow board members' support of this project. Uh, I too want to also express my gratitude to staff and also, um, applicants for not only the, the walkthrough, um, but also just the consideration in terms of the improvements and, uh, to, to sidewalks, the crosswalk, it was, it's just, it was just very well-done and I know that you, there was, you know, a little back and forth in terms of height as well and, um, I just, it really fits that location and, um, I'm really excited actually to, to see it go up, so, um, so if, uh, my, my fellow board members don't have any of, um, other comments, I'd welcome a motion.
I'll make the motion if you'd like, Madam Chair.
Please, thank you.
Resolution of the planning board, the city of Burbank approving a request for a development review and conditional use permit to construct a Media Studios spherical geodesic dome structure approximately 186 feet in diameter and 95 feet high with 28,064 square feet of floor area, project number 210001110, on a vacant site at 3401 Empire Avenue, based on the findings of the fact and subject to the recommended conditions of approval.
Thank you. Board Member Gamboa, would you like to second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Thank you, may I have the vote, please?
Board Member Azadi?
Yes.
Board Member Gamboa?
Yes.
Chair Lou?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thanks.
Okay, now we go to the next agenda item, um, reports to the board. Um, are there any reports from city staff, Mr. Meres?
Uh, no, there are no new reports.
Thank you. Uh, so we now go to the next agenda item, oral communications from the public and the public may speak during this time, um, on any matter concerning city business. Comments are limited to three minutes and if you would like to participate, please call eight one eight, two three eight, three 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 five. And the phone lines are now open and again, please bear with us as it may take a few minutes for the first callers to get through the line.
There are no callers in the queue.
Thank you. Uh, there being no public comment, I now declare this public comment period closed. So, uh, the approval of the minutes for, um, May 24th, 2021, uh, are there any questions, comments and/or a motion?
So moved.
I can second that. And can we have a vocal?
Yes. Board Member Azadi?
Yes.
Board Member Gamboa?
Um, I wasn't, uh, here, so if I abstain, are we not going to be able to approve them?
Good evening, board members, we can approve it with, with two votes.
Okay.
And Chair Lou?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're at, um, introduction to any additional agenda items. Um, board member, planning board members may introduce new items for discussion, but no action may take place except to place the item on a future agenda. Do members of the board have any items to introduce? Nope? Okay, moving on. Um, so now we have, uh, city planner comments. Any comments, Mr. Meres?
Uh, no comments.
All right, we are going to adjournment. We are now going to adjourn until the next planning board meeting on Monday, June 28th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. The public's invited to view the meeting online or on television and will be able to provide public comment in the following two ways, by leaving an e-comment on the city website, www.burbankca.gov/ecomments, or by calling indirectly to the planning board meeting at eight one eight, two three eight, three 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 five. With that, uh, thank you for joining us and have a great evening.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, guys.